All right, this time we'll move on to public comment. Okay, Michael, I think your first one's set up. I do see masks here as a discussion vice principal athletic director. As far as the last two you have there, there's not much comment the board can give. And you wouldn't want to be getting into characterizations of employees or anything like that. Typically, you don't talk about that for personnel in public. But I don't know what you comments you had other questions, so.
There was just a rumor about somebody being fired. I was trying to get clarity on.
Okay.
That was just if we could comment, if we could comment on that.
We'll handle that from the attorney here prior to comments on masks if we wanted to talk about that. In response to any college rumors, it's personnel matter. The board cannot give a comment at this time to a big personnel.
Figure that out.
Yeah.
And my, the comments I had on masks, I mean, he did lay it out that it was going to be still following what, um, I guess what Harrisburg is putting down, waiting for the litigations and stuff. But there was other school districts like Warren County School District. They had implemented something with a voluntary thing. Now they got sued over it, but they didn't get sued because they couldn't do it. They got sued because they didn't follow the right process is when I read it correctly. But I know you said we'll follow the litigation, but between last meeting and this meeting, Governor Wolf came out and said that the masks will be on the kids until vaccinations are in the kids. And I, I didn't know how you, the board felt about that, those kinds of mandates. I mean, I am, I've said it before, I am an advocate for in-person learning. Cause I don't, I don't believe that cyber school teaches anybody anything. So, I mean, I would, I would hate to have to pull my, my kids out over something like that. It's not that I'm against any kind of vaccines. I mean, we do have the polio vaccines, we do have smallpox vaccines, things like that. But those also have 15, 20, 25, 30 years, some of them with research behind them. And I didn't know how the board was seeing that action, say those lawsuits fall through and it doesn't, there's no injunction made.
Yeah, well, right now there isn't really any change in the board's perspective as far as our collective at this point. Uh, I think unless any board members want to speak up and change their mind at this point, it's our last option was wait till litigation happens and then roll back to our health and safety plan. Mention, uh, yeah, unless we have discussions to change that, I don't think anything's moving at the moment. But we're welcome to discuss it as board every, every meeting we have. So, so after the litigation's over, there could still be further discussion.
Just, it's not like it's just gonna end there.
Yeah, right now, if, uh, if they put an injunction in, then we're gonna go back to voluntary without doing anything. We don't wait for meetings or anything else. The only thing that changed our health and safety plan that was making it voluntary was the government. They put us down and say, you can't do that, but instantly goes back to our health and safety plan. We'd have to have a meeting to not do that.
Do you understand what we're saying is one, if the mandate is, there's an injunction and it's upheld, there's no mandate.
Yes.
So there will be an alert now call that night stating the mandate has received an injunction. Therefore masking on school property for buses is voluntary.
Like I said, I'm not, I mean, I don't want to speak in hypotheticals or anything, but I'm, I'm speaking if, as if they fall through and then they try to keep the mandates. I mean, I'm not, I said, I'm not against mask wearing, I'm not against the vaccines. Like I said before, I'm not against it. I'm more against people going against certain facts, against it, certain liberties. And, uh, like I said, I, I really can't stand when our own president says it's not about our freedoms. But our freedoms separate us from the rest of the world, so.
Yeah, and I imagine if it's upheld, then this board may have some more discussion.
Sorry if I sound hotheaded, but I didn't go to this school, so.
Yeah.
Think this through.
Yep. Yeah, so we'll just, at this point, like I say, we're gonna see what happens unless some, like I say, board members at any time can call for discussion on a topic, they can make a motion and things can play out.
I, I, I want to reiterate, I think the board is trusting a constitutional process right now. I was assured by our senator that represents us and representative that there's a process. There's process, much like the emergency mandate can no longer be longer than 21 days. Whether I'm for masks, pro-choice, whatever, I still try to believe in profit, process. And I do believe we don't have an emergency mandate anymore because people's voices were heard and, and laws were passed. So, and to be clear, there's a lot of guidance coming out of Harrisburg and PDE that I informed the board on that we will not, they're not mandating. I mean, they're, they're asking for us to be a testing site. And I, I can get into long debates and I am heard loudly by a lot of people. I have recommended we never be a testing site. 14 phone calls to the public last year with emails and texts stating our three greatest ways to protect kids. I don't care if it's for COVID, the flu, uh, strep throat, anything, don't send sick kids to school. Like so, um, I, I debate, I debate why, uh, I won't debate the stats and stuff. Cause I've always told, numbers don't lie, liars figure, and they can lie on either side. But I don't understand, the children are in masks because they, they believe and they debate that it's very dangerous. I've debated with leadership, with Harrisburg and shared my concerns with representatives and senators. That, um, if it's at that level and we're putting kids in masks and the only place we're putting people in masks and we're gonna turn that area into a testing site when hospitals such as EVAN and Geisinger do not let people in their buildings that's outside of tents be tested. I find that very dichotomous and, uh, against everything they stand. And they're actually, it's, it's unique, cause remember, Mike, even if, I, I believe the, you know, there's a real possibility of the injunction out. And if that does and we go back to voluntary, there could be parents on the other side, such yourself, angry too. But there's no way we're gonna make everyone happy. They also asked that we be a shot site. And I'm here to tell you that in our IU, there's no schools right now who considers either one of the things. I still believe the best way to keep from spreading the bug, flu bug, any bug, stomach bug, it just don't come to school. Don't send kids to school. That's why I never want to be an elementary teacher, cause I can't really, now they share all kinds of books there. So, but I, again, to, I, I don't want to put words in the board's mouth. I don't want to characterize the board. I, I don't think we ever want to replace parents and we try not to. Trying our best. I believe the process is always how it saves my tail many times. We're trusting a process right now.
And I, and I've commended you before when, when you.
And you don't have to do that, Mike, it's, it's okay.
But you, you talked about washing hands, about keeping kids home, things like that, which does hygiene keeps it. Parents know and I, I can't imagine what it feels like to be teachers every day, being police, telling them to pull masks and things like that if they have to or things like that. I couldn't imagine the extra stress they're under. And I don't, I don't pretend to understand your job either, so I just want.
I'd rather be doing my job than a teacher's job right now. The stress they're under with masks and for anyone to sit out there and say, this has been roses. They're just not telling the truth, they don't wash their buildings. And I'm just gonna leave it at that. It's just not true. It's, it's not, and our teachers in the daily classrooms are under a huge amount of stress. And they need to be commended alone. And I know they get paid to do that job, but right now, this is different than last, this is different. And I explained that last time. Last year, March 13th, the governor shut us down for two weeks. We stopped coming to school March 16th, we never came back. We had seniors lose graduations, proms, baseball, softball, track seasons, juniors and sophomores. Uh, one parent here, uh, then there's, they were begging to come back, they'd do anything. And the kids did, and it was stressful last year. And we had about 90 kids online, uh, which didn't go real well. Online learning, whether we're doing it or someone else is doing it, is not meant for the masks. Those it works for, it'll work, but for probably 80 of our 90 was not a good idea. And probably the 90 others that went to other cyber schools, probably about 90% of them, it's not gonna work that well. We came back to school, we, we fumbled around and remember last summer they were moving the goalposts. They'd have to keep them separated, then we had our masks, kids didn't care, they wanted to come back to school because they lost. This year we came back to school, we're in school for three weeks without masks. It's just a big difference and we don't have online learning, um, at the actual teams. It is, it is not only a stress, let me back up. It's not only a stress for the teachers, it is a stress to the kids. Those that are for masks, those that are for pro-choice, it just, it has caused stresses that are, you can't, you can't even begin to explain what they are. We try to counsel kids, I, I have some kids that aren't here right now that I miss dearly. I mean, I miss them daily, miss my interaction with them, the cat, the road cat does, we miss it. But again, I trust the process and I gotta trust their parents. And I, and in most of those, they're, they're, they're pretty darn good families. Trust their, uh, do, do I wish they were here, absolutely, but we're doing our best. Like I, I don't know how else to say this, I'm not trying to pacify anybody. Friday I might not be here, we, Mr. Knack and Ms. Walters, Walter, sorry, I should have that right. That's formerly Miss Camp, Mrs. Walter, Mr. Knack, myself, I think we're taking about 40 kids to DC. And we actually get to see, we actually, they actually got us in to see the original Constitution. So, it's exciting. I, I think, I think we need to continue to teach our children, how to, how to protest correctly, how to write letters, how to file petitions, stuff like that. I still believe in our system. I think it's flawed, but I still believe in the end, I think the flow is we want instant answers. And, and in this case we can't, but I do think in the long term, I have faith for every stronghold of protest.
All right, uh, Brian, go on.
So, I wrote down about securing our liberties. I don't know if you've gotten that in the conversation for coming up about our constitution, but I just wanted to make out just as usual, I understand because of liability reasons on your part as a board for our school. But in doing so, just some things pop in my head to realize where we are. Mr. Gesser, Mr. Matthews, boys have to come to school because they won't wear masks. They're allowed to get their report or send mold higher. They can get their education to Lion Mountain, but it's out there. During the Holocaust, when Germany took over Holland, basically the first thing they did with the Jews, they segregated them. They put, yeah, you got your education, but it's only you. Later on, they said, no, you know, no education. Next step was ability of employment. And yeah, we're, we're only talking right now, the government, businesses over 100,000 each. Yeah, 100 employees, I'm sorry, 100 employees that be vaccinated, mandated. So, we can choose not to work for any businesses. But what happens in the next step where we, a small business, Rex Shados sat here last, last time, small business, others that they be here, that if then they, we get to business with them businesses because they're vaccinated and we aren't. Take our ability and work for it. So, just some ideas are just to, I guess to hopefully open our eyes where we are as a nation. But not just that, I guess one quote that I listened to, uh, was from Samuel Adams. He said, "No people will tamely surrender their liberties, nor can any easily subdued when knowledge is diffused and virtue is preserved. On the contrary, when people are universally ignorant, debauched in their manners, they will sink under their own weight without the aid of foreign invaders." I had to look up the word diffuse, but it means to spread or to cause the spread over a wide area or among a large number of people. It's basically Samuel Adams was telling us. Those that have the knowledge will not tamely give up our liberties and virtue. But those, he goes on and says, "On the contrary, when people are universally ignorant and debauched in their manners, debauched indulging in or characterized essential pleasures to a degree perceived to be morally harmful." I won't comment on that with our nation. But I also bring forth, I'm ignorant to how the curriculum in our schools pay. Mr. Kim, we brought, you know, as far as to, to learn the Constitution. And I can say when I went through this school, yes, we, we learned about Constitution. We learned that it was a Constitution, that there was amendments, that kind of stuff. Through the book 5,000 Year Lead, it is 28 principles of not people's words, but our founding fathers' words and ideas behind why 28 principles he picked out behind our Constitution. We're using our founding fathers' words that they penned down in the Federalist Papers and such. But also it brought to light, there was a pamphlet taught by, in school systems called the Elementary Catechism on the Constitution of the United States. And, uh, I looked it up to see if it was available yet. It is for $3 a piece, we buy more than 25. But just an overview says, uh, there have been many tributes, and this is from the National Center for Constitutional Studies, where the website I found it on. There have been many tributes to the Constitution, but the highest tribute of all is the willingness of a person to take the time to study it. The Constitution is an exciting charter for human freedom that establishes nearly 300 vested rights as they apply to various segments of American society. Many people do not know the nature of these rights or how to protect them. This is why many of those rights have been eroded or lost. This book is designed to revive a better understanding of America's great Charter of Liberty by using one of the oldest teaching methods ever invented, asking questions. It was used so extensively by the famous Greek philosopher Socrates, that is often referred to as the Socratic method of teaching, teaching by asking questions. For over 100 years, this book was the method used to teach America's youth to know and understand their Constitution. In 1831, when Alex, Alexis, you know, Alexis E. Tocqueville came to America, he was amazed at how conversant the young people were with the Charter of Freedom. The catechism was the vehicle to that learn. I guess, not just to bring a link to where we are as a nation, but as a board, I don't know who makes decisions, but I throw it out there as far as looking to how we teach our Constitution. And I know we are only, you know, look at, we are only Lion Mountain, small school district. But I also listened to a, a speech by Admiral McRaven to a graduating class at Texas, Texas University, and that class was 8,000 people. But just if, if them 8,000 people touched 10 people's lives during their lifetime in like four or five generations, they touched the lives of the world. So, through Lion Mountain and the contact that our pupils have, we can have that chance.
So, the, I'm heading, it's kind of, you're wanting, you're wanting to be confirmed by us that we are teaching the Constitution and encouraging us to teach as much of the Constitution as possible.
I question, or, or is it being taught in a way that the children are understanding why their freedoms? Why, why did the founding fathers put, what was the thought behind that, that adage? It's not, I wasn't, I'm not worried that it's not being taught.
I think it's tough. By the way, be careful what you wish for also. People can interpret the Constitution. As we see it happening now, I mean, there's one side interpreting the Constitution unwilling, now another side is challenging that. I think you just simply teach the concepts of the Constitution. And as they get older into the high school levels, where they can start maybe formulating theories and stuff. I, 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 there's, if you go online, you can go right online and see the curriculum for social studies. State that's paying, it's got, it's the core. I can send you a link anytime, but, um, I don't, and you always try to give academia freedom to teachers, but they still have to do the standard, the top course, what's called.
And, uh, so there is a, there is a core, as you mentioned, the state says, this is what you're gonna get tested on. You have to reach these core principles and all the different fields of the curriculum. And that fills a lot of their day trying to meet that requirement. But the Lion Mountain superintendent, the curriculum coordinator at this point, in charge of making sure that's met. And maybe we don't know that potentially, but you wanna spin all of that.
I, I, I think what you're asking is, I, I think even in this situation, this is wonderful lessons for children in classes. I mean, constitutional process, um, problems, democracy. When I was in school, it was one of the reasons I wanted to be a socialist teacher. That gentleman is retired, he's recent. We, we had incredible discussions and things like that. But as I alluded to before, as public agents here, we are not responsible to make someone a Democrat or a Republican. And, and that's, it's a very fine line when you're doing it, you teach the Constitution. And what we do is we use history, and I know we're history teachers in here, and I saw some really good ones. I wrote one down specifically that, uh, one of them, and I've got to bring it with me. They're, they're in, and I found it interesting because they were to theorize. And the theory thing right now is everyone fired up, but their kids are theorizing of why Madison may have interpreted this way and not this way, and that's, that's incredible to me. But that can also at times offend people when you have that open dialogue on the Constitution. So, teachers, it's, Brian, I think you know what I'm trying to say, but I think they do their level best. History's, history unfortunately is not part of the standardized testing like science, reading, math. But of course it would be very difficult, you'd actually have to help you test it there because history could be, repeating history, the ancient history.
And that is why I brought it up, because I think even from my generation, it was like put on the backboard for history. And it's getting there worse.
Why, I won't, I won't debate that. I ran out of history, I ran out of social studies teaching and got an administrative degree because I thought we were gonna be out of state, so they started pushing science, math, reading. I guess it's my concern bringing up that we don't bring up ignorant pupils out of Lion Mountain, that they don't let their freedoms be trampled upon, that they know why we have these liberties that we do. And we live in a representative republic, it's not a democracy, it's a representative republic. You know, it's me, the people. And, uh, by letting our freedoms be eroded, the power system has been able to turn from what our founding fathers set it up as. Power system was, main power was the people. And then it went to the local government and then state, and basically the final power was at the, the minimum power was at the national vote. As we can see it, it's a burden. But that's why I brought it up as to look back at the first 100 years, basically in our history. That book was used to teach, it didn't make Democrats Republicans. It was used to teach the principle behind why our founding fathers put that in, why they put up the First Amendment speech.
I don't get on Facebook, I don't get on social media, period. But it ought to be alerting people that, hey, we can decide, because we're a company, we can decide what gets out there. Right now it's only private company, yeah, they do that. But what happens when the leaders of the government can say, okay, we're only gonna hear one voice, which already they're using there to squelch the opposition of vaccination, the opposition of COVID-19. The cancel form. I guess that's why I was putting it out there, I'm not saying you just have to. I just looked it up today, the book was available. And it doesn't need to be changed overnight, I was putting out there, will our school think about putting in the curriculum?
Okay. Yeah, you got that? Okay, yeah, that summarized it, that was good. Okay, any other comments from any public?
I just have a question. I saw recently that Pennsylvania voted to or chose to remove themselves from the National School Board, something or other. What does that mean?
So, uh, there's an association called the Pennsylvania School Board Association. Like all professional associations do, whatever profession you're in, they help assist the board. So, the PSBA is the, our state school board association that we belong to or a member of. And essentially the national association put out a publication or correspondence, if you will, that, uh, kind of delved into what some of the comments here tonight were, such that Pennsylvania School Board felt that it was not being represented in a manner through that way the national organization was at, certain things they were suggesting or advocating. So, the PSBA withdrew from that creation. And if you, the PSBA is online, I don't have a letter front me, but essentially the Pennsylvania School Board Association just felt that their interests were not in line with that of the national organization. So, they felt it was time to withdraw.
What does that mean for things like Common Core and?
Oh, okay, and I'm sorry, so that's, that's a separate and distinct thing. So, the school district falls under the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So the school district falls under the Pennsylvania Department of Education, as well as the Department of Health, which are governmental agencies. Um, and the PSBA is a standalone organization, uh, that the school board is a member of as an organization that just helps, like, for example, there's policies that we have implemented on an annual basis that cover anything from like social media to, you know, the buildings and grounds. And so that organization just exists by having model policies, and it also helps with, you know, publishing recent news, or, and also the advocacy on behalf of school boards, like a lobbying group at Harrisburg for advocacy of news. So it's, it's not, it's not directly affiliated with the curriculum under Pennsylvania Department of Education.
So in the news, we've got a lot of this critical race theory. Like, that's a national thing. Are we able to withdraw out of that now?
I'll, I'll refer to curriculum things back, there is no curriculum currently for critical race, and I want to emphasize the very last word, theory.
Yeah, I know, but the theory of evolution has been taught long enough that it's.
It doesn't mean it's a fact. Um, uh, anytime kids debate current events, if they, if they, if they want to bring that and discuss how they feel about, we, we don't do that stuff, but again, critical race theory began nineteen seventy-two, nineteen seventy-three. Uh, two college professors feeling how maybe some things after the Civil War may have led to right back, coming right back to where the slaves were before, just by letting them go free. There, there, there's theory options. And I can assure you, anything such as that, that to teach theories, well, you can't really teach a theory, kids love theories, but.
But we do.
But there's no critical race theory curriculum, is what I'm saying.
I, I see that, however, theories are taught as facts. There is still no fact of evolution. It is not a scientific law. It is taught, it is a theory of evolution that is taught as a fact. I'm not going to debate creation or evolution, I'm saying that theories are taught as facts. And this critical race theory, frankly, scares me.
But there is a curriculum for evolution, there is no curriculum for critical race. I'm, I'm just telling, I don't know where this, where people think this, if you can find me curriculum and show it to me, that's it, this is the curriculum for critical race theory, it'd be the first time I've seen.
All right.
Can I find you curriculum for evolution? Absolutely, yeah.
Um.
I'm not trying to be.
No, I, I'm just saying, you know, this, I was wondering if this withdrawal from the National School Board Association made us, made us, gave us more autonomy to choose our critics.
No, I think what it really stems from is, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have a ton of the history on it, I think at the national level boards, they want to treat people protesting at boards as.
Domestic terrorists.
Domestic terrorists. Domestic terrorists. So as I mentioned before, they're, they're just support groups. We don't, we're not bound by a law, by a rule or anything else, you can pay your money and belong to the association, just like you can buy a membership to any other organization you want. NRA, you can pick a home of ours, whatever, and they supply you with benefits if you want to take part in them or not, there's no mandate just because you're a member. So by, Lion Mountain belonging to the Pennsylvania School Board Association, we're just asking for guidance. They could say, hey, here's a book of all the updated policies we think you should do, and we take it on ourselves as forward to say, yes, we agree with those recommendations or not. We're autonomous to the Pennsylvania School Board decision, they have no rule over us, we don't have to do anything they say, they're just to help us, support us. If we want more trainings, they have lots of educational seminars they put on, how to be a good school board member, how to learn the do's and don'ts, and how to help guide you to get along, they give you advice. They, that organization has decided to say, well, hey, let's make sure we can pull resources. Are we giving the right guidance to school boards in Pennsylvania? So the Pennsylvania School Board Association said, hey, we might want to belong to the national. All there again is doing is saying, hey, we want to get maybe some guidance. And by them saying, we don't want to belong, it's just, hey, anything you're putting out to us, we don't really care anymore. No, you, you don't mean much to us, so why give you any money? So they just said, no, we're not going to do it, so, but still, we're autonomous regardless of either of those two entities, because they're not governmental entities, they're just alcohol and support. Still, Department of Ed and Department of Education, that's, that's where it's at for our mandates. I believe, I feel pretty confident that, uh, in our current representation, that, all of it, I think the more we huddle and puff on either side, the more the other side that helps us. I, I think the, I, I just don't think there's any new curriculum being written, I don't think there's any new written, you know, I think going back to the social studies problem, being a social studies teacher, one of the biggest problems we have, history keeps getting longer, we don't have enough time to get to the end of it right now. And, uh, I, I believe civil war is a huge monumental thing, and, and I, I think we try to teach it chronologically, we should teach it thematically, more like why, why did the Civil War occur, and how does that relate to World War One, but, uh, unfortunately, books are not written that way, and curriculums aren't written that way. And we, we try here in the, our departments have tried to go more thematic. Um, it's an, I, I would sit here and debate with a social studies curriculum, I, I have a passion, so, that's efficient. I, I think we, I think forever we have, we don't study history enough, I think we always say, man, we make mistakes over and over, but we've been doing that forever. We put reprimands on Germany in World War One, and we continue to do things like that and it just fires up another war and we continue. It's bizarre how we repeat history, nothing's new. We, we don't do a very good job of teaching history when the first school shooting at Texas, that was nineteen sixty-five. Uh, you think the first school shooting was in nineteen eighty-nine, ninety-seven in California? And, uh, they stood from the, the bell tower, have actually touched Christian. That's just. I, we think how terrible it is now, and, and I try to teach that we go through times of histories that are terrible, um, most of the people here are old enough, really, oh, there's a couple, oh, and sit that side there. Uh, nineteen seventy-two in Kent State, I don't think there was any over time in history of the United States. Uh, we protested the war, peace, love, then they went to Angel Dust and, and LSD and, uh, it was, it was terrible. And I, I think that's our failure, we think every situation is the end of the world. And I, I think, I, I just think we need to do a better job of asking the question, why sometimes things happen? I'm not, it's, it's a passion that, again, I, I think, I get tired of hearing everyone say how bad our kids are today. I, I went to school here and, and, and I know some of the things we did. I, I think they're as good as they've ever been, but everyone is trying to convince us our kids are terrible. I don't believe that. I mean, then we come here and we talk, this is being taken, that's being taken, this is that, I don't, I don't, I don't always jump on those rides. Trying to, try to. I, I think all, I think most of us are pretty proud of what happens here. Uh, I think we have a pretty good staff, I think we have a pretty grounded staff. There's constitutional things put in place that I firmly believe in. Just because of separation of church and state, we know there's, there's many activities that go on here that are church related, that there's a process that has to be followed that protects us from all kinds of things. And I believe in this process. And, and I do believe good will come out of all this movement. I do, I, I pray of that. I, I believe, I believe our kids are responding, and I believe once we get through it, we're able to eventually say, look, wow, you survived a COVID, we can survive this. I, I, I believe that. That's, that's how I coach, that's how we talk. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I could go on, I could speak to infinity.
He can.
Oh, yes. One question I have, and I know you had alluded to, there's so much history, and it's hard to kind of pick and choose what, what to teach. You have September eleventh, you have, you know, Vietnam was being one of the, then the Cold War and all those. But I, I look at, it might just be a personal opinion, but to me, one of the most critical points of history is the beginning of the history of the United States. Educating children on why and how the sacrifices that were made to, first of all, become a country of our own, Declaration of Independence was signed, and how most of those men were kind of putting their life and their liberty at stake, ultimately giving up their ultimate freedom, putting crosshairs on their back, but going what was right even when it was the unpopular opinion. And there's so many lessons that can be taught in that, I think if it's taught correctly, with helping people understand that sometimes going against a popular, um, status quo, if you will, is oftentimes the right direction to go. Just because everybody else is doing it doesn't mean it's right, or, or, he was saying, question what you're being taught, or not just being taught to be told how to think, but being taught to learn how to question and get a deeper meaning and deeper understanding of what it's all about. I mean, it's disheartening to me that they, that they have classes on science that they get graded on, but they don't on history.
No, we can grade it on history. They have classes on history, they can grade it, they're just not standardized testing like math, reading.
Got you.
Right. Oh, no.
Is there standardized testing on science though?
Yes.
So why is that? It's, it's the way they want the children's minds to be.
You know what, I'm going to be honest, I, I, when I fought the science test, I'll fight the social studies standardized test, I don't, I'm not crazy with standardized tests at the beginning.
Yeah.
What I think the science test and the history test are is just another reading test. I mean, we can get into talk, I don't, I could go on for hours on curriculum, and if, if a child struggles to read, and they can't, and they're basic on a reading test, why are we going to subject them then to a science and social studies test when we know they already are struggling to read? That, please, I, I believe we need to teach social studies, science, and they need to be there, I just don't think we need another state standardized test.
Yeah.
I, 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 hmm, I, I think they're terrible. I, you, you want to know what's wrong with education? We try to treat every kid the exact same way, and on top of our website, preach, there is not always equal. A third grader is tested, and they are put into a box of the low basic, basic, proficient or advanced. Guess what we do again in fourth grade? We test them again. And then we test them again in fifth, and then we test them again in sixth, and then we send them to remediation, we do this, and then they go to remediation, one of their friends are out playing. And we send kids home with hours homework, for some it'll take five minutes, others it might cause incredible stress on parents, and then there's anger and there's other, there. Please don't walk out of here thinking, I believe standardized testing is a great idea, I just don't. I, I think it has caused us more problems than it's worth. But again, they got to be able to read to be able to study history.
Sure.
I just know from my years of education, history was my favorite topic.
Mine too.
And I've always engaged in it, and I always engage my children in it. I guess my final question is, is there any school in Pennsylvania, aside from private Christian schools, that still do have prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance in the morning?
We pledge allegiance every day.
I know that.
And a kid can pray at any time.
But is it offensive to say the prayer?
No, but if we say one prayer, that's, again, as a group we're saying.
Yeah.
Can we, like, here we do a moment of silence. Have to be careful, and I, I.
But just to have like a standard Lord's Prayer.
That, then you'd have to then open up opportunities for, we, remember why we left England? Why did we leave England? For freedom of religion.
Yeah. But you still have that.
Do we do the Lord's Prayer here?
No, I'm saying you still have that when you look at the Judeo Christian principles, anyone else.
Yeah, but what defines religion? That could be Judaism, that could be Islam, that could be Christianity. We have, if, if you, if you, we cannot allow one and not the other, then, then, the separation of church and state is pretty good, because it needs to be student initiated, and there needs to be a faculty advisor. And, and we've survived pretty good, we have Bible clubs, we have prayer around the pole, uh, but it needs to be student initiated. We, I'm sure you've never discouraged, nor would I discourage, uh, no, no, quiet Judaism, but I, I, we can't do that. I mean, we're, we're, we're preaching the Constitution. And in the Constitution, it says what?
One nation, under our.
No.
Where they're.
That's our pledge of allegiance.
Oh, sorry.
Freedom of religion.
Yeah.
It does not say freedom of Christianity. Students can do the, that, that's correct. Okay, if kid wants to stop praying, they can pray at any time. Or it's gotten excessive is where somebody says they're offended over speaking about somebody else's religion.
Yeah.
On sake of taking the stance, well, nobody's allowed to talk about it, nobody's allowed to pray. We're not that way at Lion Mountain, as far as I'm aware.
My question was just, like, when did that stop in the public sphere? Because it used to be.
When did the, when did the Lord's Prayer stop? Nineteen sixty-three? And we're still blaming that for the ruination of faith?
For why?
And, well, I, I go, I go, churches, we're still blaming nineteen sixty-three of why we keep praying. I think it's churches being the right guy. We have prayer around the pole, people know about it, how many churches tell their kids to go? I'm, folks, you want to debate, I'm open. There's plenty of stuff to go around. We make, we make fun of some people that go door to door for years, I admire, don't necessarily agree with them. I don't think you'll, you'll find a much more supportive school district probably anywhere around, uh, and I'm proud to have the administration we do and the policies that, that they enforce on the curriculum. I mean, you all, you're, you're all stressing history, the Constitution, I'm proud to have a, a history teacher as our curriculum coordinator at the moment. So I don't, I don't think you'll get a better focus than we possibly can, we still have to follow the rules that were given, but I, I feel pretty blessed that where, where we're at.
And I, I feel that too, it just, my biggest concern is that twenty years from now, there's another lead, you know, and it just, when you went to school here, you probably have a prayer ambassador.
No.
Not?
No, nineteen sixty-three.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
You know what drives me crazy though, when I hear, when I, when I hear about, oh, wait, the private schools praying, I think most of our teens pray before every event, drives, drives me insane. We, we, we are beat down, and it offends us sometimes. Great, and I love the Lord, but it offends.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Isn't there something that just got passed about transparency with the curriculum of the school for people? the schools where people go online?
No, they're, they're actually trying to do that, uh, I, again, this critical race theory has got everyone just lit up. We can't, because something happens in a bigger city or somewhere in a classroom, doesn't mean it's happening in all classrooms across the state, and that, it's exactly what they want. It's in the news.
I get it, I just, I imagine a lot of these people are just hoping you're not teaching divisiveness or excerpts from 1619 Project and things like that, which, which teach people to hate based on the color of skin or anything.
Well, I don't think we need to teach them to hate, I think they just need to watch adults right now.
Turn, turn on ABC.
I think they just need to watch adults, because there's, there's more than enough hate, we don't need to go back to history. And I don't believe every school board is what we're seeing and coming out of Virginia either. That's correct. Yeah, they throw Virginia under the bus, there's a lot of people there too.